Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, March 3rd, 2025 times 9:00 a.m. Let's open the meeting with a flagrant. Thank you, everyone. Ed, can you call the roll, please? Yes. Mr. Reagan.
President.
Mr. Brand. Present. Mr. Henry. Here. All right, we're gonna start with announcements. First, we're going to, I'm gonna wait on the years of service at the end of the meeting. We're going to start off with the Employee of the Month.
Mr. Brand.
Yep. So first, we have Zach Craig gonna do a presentation. We have two Employees of the Month today. We're pleased that our second month, the number of nominations were tripled. So I think this thing's up and off the ground. I appreciate the work that Kyle Johnson's done to help automate this progress. And, uh... Zach, four years.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to recognize a member of our office who has been with the prosecutor's office now, um, 21 years. She started in 1994 as part-time in our child support division. In 95, she moved to full-time in our child support division. In 2013, she moved over to our criminal division as an investigator. She's been my investigator since 2017 and dealt with me for now eight years in that role. In that role, she has been an investigator on the worst of the worst cases, murders, dealing resulting in death cases. Um, and she is the face of our office when we're dealing and meeting with victims' families of these horrible, horrible crimes. And, um, we could not do what we do in our office without Heather Stanley. So that's who I'm recognizing this month.
Heather, anything you'd like to say? You don't have to, it's not required. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. That was our first nomination from the Justice Center. I appreciate it. We had one nomination from the county building downtown here, too. I believe Jeff Hanser's gonna present.
Good morning, Jeff Hanser, Chief Probation Officer. I'm here on behalf of our Court Administrator Emily Anderson, who actually submitted the nomination for this individual. However, I happened to be in Emily's office when she was submitting it and definitely concur with her recommendation. And thinking about systems or government or any business, uh, really, those things are all people. And I think the Employee of the Month award kind of speaks on behalf because we, you know, people make things run. And this individual is one of those employees that really helps makes everybody else's job easier. This is an employee of the county Daughters Department. And as we all know, that's an integral part of our operations. Uh, and, you know, as a probation officer and, you know, court administration, I, we need help in those areas. Um, and this person really has helped us tremendously over the years. Very competent, very earnest. She picks up the phone when you call. That's a huge thing. Um, and if she doesn't know the answer to something, she says, hey, I'll get back to you right away and, and we'll figure it out. Um, outside of work, uh, she's involved in some community organizations and helping make Muncie a better place to live for us all. She certainly, uh, helps us make our jobs easier. And we just wanna show our appreciation to Kida Etsel as Employee of the Month as well.
So Kida, you get the parking spot on the east side of the building where I would normally park. If you would prefer to park in that privileged parking, you're welcome to do so for the next one. You're welcome. Thank you, Kida. Right next, we have, uh, I'm gonna do EMA and, um, 911. I'm gonna go down to the podium, John and Cory, this is Cory here? Yes. So, uh, John's Director of Work Management, Cory is Deputy Director. And, uh, they, they recently have, um, obtained their certificate as, uh, professional, professional emergency managers. Um, in order to get this, it takes approximately 200 hours of training, 100 hours of focused on specific emergencies, and 100 hours just in general management. So there's 19 different, um, sets of criteria, I guess, that they have to go through to get this certification. And part of it is, uh, it's, it's not only teaching, they have to teach, um, they have to train, and they have to actually participate in a, uh, actual declared emergency at the Emergency Operations Center. So this, this isn't something, I don't know how many emergency managers in the state, but probably not a lot across the state. But this has been a difficult, long process for them. And they, uh, they recently have, um, got their certifications. So, uh, very proud to present this, um, certificate to John. Proud of you. And Cory. There's a lot that these guys do that really nobody knows about. And I've just, uh, I, I had, uh, a representative from AEP come up to me. Um, this past week, actually, these guys were out on the scene of, of a semi, the drive, and it's fine. We can, uh, diesel and oil everywhere. Um, but these, these guys do a lot. They're on the hazmat team. They, they just do a lot for this county that, that people don't recognize. And I'm, I'm very... Next is, I want to, uh... Facebook. Thank you, guys. I wanna recognize Fred, Mr. Fred Cummings. And he, uh, he asked me not to do this, but, um, I, I feel like our employees need recognizing when they're out here doing stuff. So Fred graduated from the Phase One, Wall State University Certified Public Manager Program, um, just a few weeks ago. And he starts the second phase of this, this fall, September. Yep. So, uh, Fred deserves a hand. Good, good job. Very proud of you. Thank you. Four years, sir. I actually have Chris King here if he wants to come in. Um, I have to recognize him as well. If he comes in. Um, so there was a Facebook post on Friday that I wanna highlight. Um, one of the things, one of my goals when I took over was to make our training program, um, set to a national standard. And over the last two and a half years, as part of his Registered Public Safety Leader Program, Chris worked on our agency training program. And I'm happy to report that as of Friday, we were notified by Apple International that our training program is now set to a national standard. And we are one of, we are either the first or one of the first in Indiana to accomplish this. I've been along two and a half years, but I'm proud of it. And Chris should be proud of it because of the amount of time that he put into it. So I'd like to recognize him as well. Mr. King, would you like to comment? I so much.
Well, if I'd have known I was gonna be giving comments, I'd have prepared something. But it's cool, I just had to show up. Um, like I told the Director and Deputy Director, whenever I was notified that we received this certification, and, and they were like, well, congratulations. It wasn't just a me, um, a me project. It included everyone that we, um, employ at 911. It includes everyone that we service, including, uh, the public. Um, so it's not just a, a congratulations to me. It's a congratulations really to all of Delaware County and all of 911. But thank you. Thank you. Nice job. Appreciate it.
All right, there's a lot, lot going on, uh, in other buildings here in the county, I guess. Um, okay, we have appointments. Murray and Health Services. Yep. So Murray and Health Services is an organization that the Commissioners give quite a bit of money to every year. I think it's mandated by state code. I don't really use the state code off the top of my head, but it's somewhere around $700,000. And that gives us the opportunity to have an appointment on their board. Commissioner Reagan and I spoke with Seth at Legislative Update Breakfast here recently. And he said he's currently operating with 14 members, which is an even number, uh, which can create complications sometimes. But ideally, you have an odd number on the board. And he asked if we were gonna appoint somebody. So I think the previous appointment was Mr. King. So that's the purpose of talking about Murray today. And then, Commissioner Brand, oh, do it for you. That's perfect. No second. Rule call, please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. That's other thing. All right, next, Delaware County Prevention Council. Yeah, I was approached by a couple of board, people on the board for the Delaware County Prevention Council asking if the Commissioners were gonna appoint someone. And I had passed that information on to, to the two of you. Commissioner Reagan asked if this was not a Commissioner appointment, rather, a council appointment. I reached out to Jessica Piper, who was the President, uh, previously of the council. And she said this is not the county council appointment.
I don't know. At one time, there was a council member that served. He might have just been serving, you know, individuals. But we've never received any kind of notification that we have a fee.
I've never, I've never...
I think they have some new, um, leadership.
So I'm gonna have a little bit of information here about the meeting dates. Um, and they're not consistent. Some of them are on the third, uh, the third day, the third Tuesday of the month. Some are on the second one, and one on the fourth. There's not one in October. I don't know the location or time, so I would make the motion that we table this until we can gather more information. Motion to table that appointment. And a second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Reagan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Uh, there was a question came up, um, from the sheriff about the creed, um, board appointment that we made. We had no, we had appointed David Williams. And he's been the Commissioner's appointment, uh, as I understand it, for several years. And, uh, our legal counsel, John Brooks, said that there was a requirement to have someone representing the union on that creed board. So that still needs vetted out whether David Williams qualifies and is interested or not. But I believe the creed board, uh, is still open. And we should at least put it on the table so we don't forget about it. Very good. All right. Do we need to make a motion to put this on the table? Daniel?
I've let him know.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to put the creed board, David Williams, on the table.
Okay.
Motion and a second rule call, please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Okay, next, uh, ta, under Table Business, Handbook Revisions. I know we, um, we did have a meeting that I became part of by default, uh, last week, I think. Uh, did, did, did you guys get those emailed, the updates for the handbook?
Yeah, yeah.
It's Pam here to speak. Pam, you all speak about any of that? So I'll make a motion to take the handbook provisions off the table.
Okay.
Do we have a motion removed from the table? One second. Rule call, please.
I just kinda wanted to... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang on. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Go ahead.
I just kinda wanted to give a report on this. I'm gonna ask that these, that it will be tabled again. But we are working very hard on this and we are making progress. We had a really good meeting the other day. And so, um, I hope we have the Commissioner's support on our decisions. And that's what I just wanted to let people know, the reason this is being tabled. We're doing a lot of work. We're going through each thing in the handbook.
But I think, I think we're getting, I mean, I, in my opinion, we're getting close to...
We're getting very close.
We're, we need to approve this. So I, I would like to definitely seriously revisit this next week.
Okay, that's great.
We can get...
I think we can get it. Except that, because we don't have a lot left to do.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, so you're saying it'll be on the agenda, being reviewed and approved next week?
Yes, I'm, I'm, if I stand here, yes, I hope.
I, I think so.
Yeah. It does, it depends on how this meeting goes on Thursday. I mean, we got done business last week and we got a lot done. So that's what we need. The next couple of meetings that we have done.
That's, that's motion to that table. Yes. Motion to table it again. Second. Second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Reagan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. No new information on solar? Uh, I actually do have an update. I'd like to remove that from the table and provide an update. Have a motion to remove from the table? Second rule call, please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Goodness, Brandon. Thank you. So I've attended a number of additional meetings, um, with some of the other counties, uh, some folks that are in favor of the solar, some folks that are concerned about the solar. Um, I honestly haven't met anyone yet that just says absolutely no to solar. Um, people generally believe that there's a place for solar with the right guardrails in place. Um, I attended the National Grid Renewable, uh, meeting at Cornerstone Center for the Arts last week. Uh, I sold their buildable map with our current ordinance in place with the 500 foot setbacks. I had a real meaningful conversation with, um, Christina Blunt from National Grid Renewables, talking about, uh, how they could take care to, uh, maybe compromise the setback where there's a, an empty lot that's adjacent to a solar and get it further away from the residents and put it closer to an empty lot. Um, she had a discussion there I witnessed with some of the landowners that are gonna be affected by the solar, but not benefiting from the solar. Uh, so I was, I was pleased with that. And I really want to, I've said it a couple of times for National Grid Renewable, they're doing the best job out of all of the companies that are, uh, doing solar work in the county of giving the community an opportunity for input and participation. Uh, I've received a number of emails, as I believe both of the other two Commissioners have, uh, people, you know, giving their opinion on, on solar. And I appreciate that. I respond to every single one of them, even if it's only a simple thank you. I want people to know that, that I've read it and I've responded. The ordinance, uh, work goes on, uh, starting to work with the Planning Commission all that. Still working with, uh, John Brooks and Danielle Scrubell. So that work's going on. Um, I wanted to mention that, uh, as it relates to the National Grid Renewable, uh, they sold recently. Uh, there's a company called, uh, Brookfield Asset Management that has purchased National Grid Renewable. I don't know what that means. I, you know, I'm not on the inner workings of either one of those companies. I just wanted to make a note that National Grid Renewables, uh, has sold. And I believe that one thing that the Commissioners and the council need to take up are economic development agreements. Um, there is an economic development agreement within Energy. Um, I'm not super pleased with that agreement. It's a little bit anemic. It doesn't do much benefit of the county or the citizens of Delaware County and the other companies. There is not an economic development agreement in place. And it's my opinion and mine alone, um, I've talked to the Commissioners about this, that these economic development agreements should be put in place prior to permitting. And I think that's important for a couple of reasons. Uh, one reason is, uh, the company who is obviously trying to make this thing pencil out on paper, whether it's good or bad business, needs to know what the economic development agreement looks like before they go permit. Last thing we wanna do is have them, like, end up with an economic development agreement that's ungood for them or the county. And then we're too far down the road. So, um, I did start discussions between the council leadership and the Commissioners via email last week about getting the economic development agreements back up on the table. Specifically, who's the lead? And the last agreement, I think, the one with Energy, was done by the Commissioners Economic Development Representative. And the council believes it's a responsibility. My proposal is that we go together. So more to come, uh, on that. Also, I've made some comments about, uh, small modular reactors. Uh, there's a, there's a CINNA bill in place that talks about that. And I was told, hey, you might be confusing the public a little bit comparing when I visit, uh, visited the Cook Nuclear Plant up in Bridgman, Michigan, and SMRs. And they're two totally different things. Uh, we would never build, uh, a plant here in Delaware County like you see in Bridgman, Michigan. That's a, there's two huge reactors. They take in a million and a half gallons of water a minute from Lake Michigan and return it the same way. SMR's gonna use that technology. They use a couple of different types. Some of them use some cooling salts, some of them use some liquid metals, and they're, it's all self-contained onsite. I wanted to make the public aware, in case they hadn't seen it, that American Electric Power, who is our power provider here in Delaware County, has, uh, applied and they're seeking grants from the U.S. Department of Energy. They're looking for a $50 million grant from the Tennessee Valley Authority. Uh, there's a property down in Rockport, Indiana, where the coal, uh, coal plants were. And they're looking at that might be the first site in Indiana for a small modular reactor. Uh, the type of technology that they're proposing using there is a General Electric Atachi partnership. And the model of reactor that they're talking about using is a GEH DWRX-300. And, uh, that would be, uh, similar, uh, to, I think, a no, about 100 of these types of reactors have been installed, uh, in the world. It's proven technology. It's similar to what you see in our, in our naval nuclear fleet or submarines and carriers and things like that. So, uh, very, very mature, very stable technology. Um, one other thing, I got asked, uh, if, uh, if, once this permitting process does start, the, there's a requirement or ordinance that this go through the special use process through the Planning Commission and the BCA. And, uh, I've got a copy of that here. And some folks pointed out some of the standards to me. Uh, this is Article 31 in our Special Use Standard. And under B in Standards, uh, number one says, "The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare." And number two, under that same section, uh, this was also pointed out to me, "That the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity or the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood." So I was asked to point those things out. That concludes my update. You might have to put the filter back on, man. No, second. Motion to put the solar back on the table and second rule call, please. Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Reagan. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Next is the Agreement for Economic Development with ECIR PD. Make a motion to take it table. Second. Motion to remove that from the table in a second. Rule call, please. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brand. Yes. Mr. Henry. Yes. Cory Commissioners.
Solar's good. It's pretty far. Last meeting, I think you've all have in front of you a new agreement as we have sat down and had several discussions. Uh, this is for the international development only. Uh, we kinda went through, had a couple of meetings, uh, went over some topics. Uh, the services there, we want to continue what we've established over the last eight years. I mean, we have a pretty good pipeline. Uh, some of the things, just to update a little bit service-wise, uh, you know, we help with buildings, building sites, leases, uh, legal attorneys, all of that. Um, from banks to accounting, permitting, utility, housing, all of those services that we've used and put together in a nice layout, uh, the, uh, partners that we have all still are in place. And just a little update of where we stand as of right now, what has taken place for a little bit. Uh, Filtrix North America, already here, everybody, uh, somewhere aware of. Trip, Trevi Robotics, FD Casting, Colorflex NA. We had a meeting on that. That will be the lease signs this month, maybe this, this week. We've got the visa was taken in, so we can now enter into the lease on that. Colorflex can now become part of Delaware County. Uh, Mercelli, Inox, who, uh, we're all aware, well aware of. Clearline Technologies, and we just did the ribbon cutting in February, uh, with BiTechnic. They got certified for their major line and things are moving forward there. Uh, those are ones that we've already established and have been brought here. What's currently in the pipeline, some of these, I will not name the names of the company because we're still in talking, but it's, you know, we're tough. Shannon, our Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Reagan have been there. But, uh, we have a hydraulic cylinder that is moving closer, uh, to fruition. Uh, restaurant equipment manufacturer that has over a million square feet in Italy right now that is still interested in some sites that we have in the industrial center. Uh, a candy supplier that, uh, has made contact with us two or three times. Did we still need to, uh, make a trip there? Uh, a helicopter manufacturer that we met at the last Select USA. I believe Sherry and Shannon, you were both there on that. Those conversations need to take place. Uh, we have kept those communications going as you have reworked to, uh, put the economic development team together along with the county and along with the city of Muncie. So, um, I think things are looking bright. I think we have great opportunities. Uh, first week of May, uh, as you are well aware, we have the Select USA Summit. That is where the major hit comes from, all the foreign investment that comes in. The, uh, platform for that will go live this month. We will start doing research on companies that are coming, uh, going through the data and presenting them to you to set appointments for those meetings that take place, uh, those first hour of three days in Maryland. So hopefully, we can keep the pipeline going. We have them, as you see, in all three different phases, uh, from beginning to somewhere in the middle with logistics and paperwork being done, visas being waited on, immigration paperwork, to BiTechnic signing the lease, getting certified for a major supply line. We have been busy. Uh, we wanna continue with this. I think, uh, Commissioners from our meetings has laid out a good plan to move forward, uh, how, how you want economic development to happen, uh, throughout the county with all parties involved. Uh, I think it's, uh, a good, a good system that you set up. The matrix, uh, that you set out, I mean, getting down to it, getting together so that we all know what is going on from a month-to-month basis so that we can help each other out in whatever form or fashion that may be. Just because it's international development, once it's international, it comes in here, then it will go to local. I mean, it will go to local, both, but whether it's in the county or whether it's in the city. So it will be all three teams working together to try and continue this pipeline. Uh, this has been the Commissioners' program. Eight years ago, I was just blessed to be on the ground floor of it. Uh, the system has been refined, it's been worked, and I think we've proven, uh, a very good track record with this. Thank you.
This is a reduction over what we tabled two weeks ago as I'm, as I'm reading here. Correct. And you will need to hire someone to... Yes, I'll, we're bringing two more people on staff, uh, with EC, with ECI. So questions how we think of this. Correct. And there's another one on the agenda in a few minutes that all have the same question. So, um, I think we need to probably review the funding with Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. I think that's where the funding would come from for this. I don't see it. I have, we, we, we have paid some out of that, but I, I believe the majority of, of the ECRs. It's been, it's went back and forth several different times, depending on where, where you're at in your three-year edit plan. I mean, availability of dollars and what's going on as far as the redevelopment commission. The two go hand in hand. I mean, you work in one side of it, then you may be doing a building and a bond in this area or, or other things, infrastructure costs coming out of that. So it is a, it's pretty much a constant flow. We've been back and forth over the years when it was best to suit your budget. So looking at the edit, Commissioner Reagan, Project Three, uh, Muncie Delaware County Redevelopment, there's $100,000 in the edit plan for 2025. And at the last meeting, we allocated $50,000 of that to IREX program. There's $50,000-ish left in that Project Three. And then as I look at Project Four, Economic Development, which is general heading, there's also $100,000 for 2025. So this, the money isn't there in the current area plan, which expires June 30th. Not in the edit. What's that?
May, we will be working on the edit. Have it ready by Thursday.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, because this one expires in June 30th. So I would make the motion to approve, um, considering review with Delaware County Development Commission for the funding of this economic development agreement, so services agreement. A motion for approval, um, and we will, um, talk to DCRC about possibility of... A motion for approval, and we will talk to D C R C about possibility of assisting anybody for this, this contract. Okay, so Sherry made a motion. We have a second roll call, please. Professor Regan.
Yeah.
Professor Brand. Yes. Professor Henry. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you. Next, next, we have the approval of the minutes for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. You guys had some revisions to those minutes. You did. We had pointed Kristi Knapp to the B C A, and the correct spelling for her name is K R I S T I K N A P T, which I believe that correction was made. And then I sent another correction on the Crown Castle letter, which we're going to talk about again here in a second, that we declined the consent of the Savelys, but I'll get to that in a minute. And then I think on the ECI R P D contract, which we just talked about, Commissioner Regan or Commissioner Henry called the motion table last meeting. And then, let's see, there was a correction to the spelling. Under my comments, I said in energy, and instead of energy, it should be in energy, I N B E N E R G Y. And then I believe in the last meeting, we approved the new norm agreement for Jamie Bang at the last meeting, and I don't see that in minutes. So we need to add, that was the last meeting, correct, Jamie? Yeah. So we need to add the new norm agreement into the into the correction minutes. We make the motion to approve the minutes on those corrections that I just particularly A motion, second roll call, please. Professor Brand. Yes. Professor Regan.
Yeah.
Professor Henry. Thank you. Next, we have presentations to Commissioners. It's the little button right in the middle on the bottom there. There you go. Terriff, can you turn that one on right behind you, right in the middle on the bottom? Push that little button, please. Are you looking for your camera? There you go. I can't. Right? There you go.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Nichols. I'm the project manager for the Safe Streets for All Federal Grant for East Central Indiana Regional Planning District. ECI, with me the wonderful Ms. Kyleen Swatgamer, who is the executive director of the Delaware-Muncie Metropolitan Planning Commission. Today, our goal to you is to introduce both our organizations, explain to you what the S S four A federal grant is, how this federal grant will benefit you and all your community. Let me start by introducing my organization. Everyone, if you may remember just a few short moments ago, or months ago, we should speak just a few moments ago, too, our executive director, Bill Walters, gave a great presentation of everything going on at ECI, Regional Planning District. He spoke of many federal grants and state grants that we currently have going on. One of those was the S S four A federal grant. And I just wanted to remind everybody of the fourteen to one turnaround ECI has put back in since its foundation in two thousand and nine. For anybody who doesn't know who ECI Regional Planning District is, I have listed our mission statement and primary purpose, along with a little bit of information about us. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kyleen to introduce her organization and explain more about the S S four A grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. You guys are familiar with my office, but this is a reminder to everyone, we are the planning commission for the city of Muncie and Delaware County. We also house the building commissioner and do all the permitting. We are also designated as the M P O by the governor of Indiana. Any urbanized area with over fifty thousand with a population over, uh, against, so we provide that function as well. This helps us get federally authorized to receive money for the projects, safety projects, bridge, safety projects. Um, okay. So a little bit about the safe, safe streets and roads for all grants. The S S four A was established through the I I J A. This program will have five billion dollars dispersed through the years of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. ECI did receive this grant July twenty-fourth. So this grant has been awarded to ECI and my office has, um, there is still almost two billion dollars on the table for implementation grants. So in the future, we will be seeking this money, and this will help implement the projects that we find throughout this first cycle. So how does this benefit you? Improved Broadway safety leads to fewer serious injuries and deaths. Sustainable infrastructure supports long-term economic growth. Effective transportation planning enhances mobility and connectivity. Regional collaboration strengthens community resilience. A result of this will be a regional transportation safety action plan. So the four counties of Blackford, Delaware Bay, and Grant will all have this plan to then be able to use in our county. Most importantly, implementation dollars can be sought and used to complete projects in our area.
All right, so now let me talk a little bit more about kind of where S S four A came from. So the S S four A federal grant is called a safe system approach, and that is also what has been developed through Vision Zero, which is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. You can see how it aligns with the S S four A grants initiative very well. I want to read a statistic up here, which is also when you click on the Vision Zero's official website, it's one of the first things you'll read. Each year, more than forty-two thousand people, which is the population of a small city, are needlessly killed on American Street. Many thousands more are injured. We call this suffering traffic accidents, but in reality, we have the power to prevent traffic collisions. Notice the change in the word there at the end. And finally, I listed an image I put together. This is just listing a few things that the traditional approach used to think, and now what the safe system approach brings to the table. And I don't like you guys, I don't think saving lives is not, you know, as expensive. So the broader term, what is a safe system approach now? Again, Vision Zero is one of these. This was something that was embraced by the transportation community as an effective way to address and mitigate the risk inherited in our enormous and complex transportation system. It works by building and reinforcing multiple layers of protection to both prevent crashes from happening in the first place and minimize the harm caused to those involved when they do occur, because we know, again, everybody's perfect, we're going to have crashes. That's not the goal here, to prevent crashes, you know? That's something that's a little unreasonable, but the point is, is that we can do something to make a change. The biggest point here is why I have the second bulletin folded, is this is a major shift from the conventional or traditional safety approach, because now it focuses on human mistakes and vulnerability and designs a system with many redundancies in place to protect everyone.
Okay, so we are here just because we need your engagement. Local leaders like you possess firsthand knowledge of issues in your communities, concerns. We're simply asking for engagement and feedback. Key safety concerns in your area, existing safety initiatives that you're aware of, and any opportunities for inter-county collaboration. We are reaching out to key stakeholders, and we are also forming a steering committee. We are looking for about three to four people from each of the counties to serve on a steering committee. As a member of the steering committee, responsibilities would be include to collaborate with other local officials, review data, and attend periodic meetings to provide input and feedback. Our meetings, let's see, we are looking at about four meetings between the timeline of April through December. So that would be the commitment. We would like to have any one of you serve on this steering committee or a designee of your choice. So that's what we are here for. We're not here to ask for money, we're here to ask for you to work with us. We're looking for representative for our steering committee. We're looking for your engagement and to keep you informed and also for your feedback. Well, I would be glad to volunteer if nobody else wants to do it, because it's just so sad how we see people walking the old-fashioned way. And we were always taught years ago, walk facing traffic, ride your bike with traffic. I believe that's still the say. And we just don't see that sometimes in our city streets. You know, I wish we could put more sidewalks into some of the money. More sidewalks. This this study will go on until the final report is done. Anything found within that final report that could help improve safety could then be applied for to be implemented as a project. So this could identify those concerns and those issues. Thank you. Yeah. Come on, Bill.
No, just one thing, and this is important. I know she mentioned the two billion dollars on the backside. There's a lot into this planning grant that helps out everybody throughout the region, identifying where those issues are and the problem areas that we can reduce. Now we can look at what you and mayors are looking at their infrastructure projects and try to match those up, then go after part of that two billion dollars to relieve up to eighty percent of that cost, so that you can move those infrastructure dollars to another project. This whole grant, there is no ask on this, because ECI, from the backside, we've used our administration funds in that. This was a five hundred thousand dollar grant. A hundred thousand of it comes from us. That's fifty thousand in kind and fifty thousand in cash. That is all going to be done out of ECI R P D from the reserves that we've had from taking on the other grant. So we're investing the money that we have used on the administration side so that we can get to the next step. I think the win of this, and these guys have worked really good with the D O D program manager, we increased the, we moved the date up to complete, so we would still be eligible for some of that two billion dollars on the backside. That basically does a lot, just not only for you, but for her with urban dollars and being able to move it around, maybe making agreements with others that she can move funds around that we would not lose, when they've got shovel-ready projects that we can go after that fund. I'm in favor of Commissioner Regan's support, and I think this is important, specifically for the region. I think this is a good opportunity for the R P Os and the M P Os to put together, which I believe is a big focus of the state. I would only ask Commissioner Regan to consider, and the team, to consider autonomous driving vehicles coming from the automotive industry. I'm acutely aware of the technologies that are coming with autonomous driving vehicles that they use sonar, they use LiDAR, and they use radar. And these vehicles are smart. They will eventually communicate with the cities. It's called a Connected Cities Program. So if there's a new pothole and the traffic pattern sees a bunch of autonomous driving vehicles swerving around it, it'll update the system, it'll notify the street department and get somebody out there, but it will also warn people coming ahead if there's a new marking, a new stop sign, a new speed limit sign. All these vehicle systems will recognize that stuff and communicate with Connected City. The intention there is also zero fatalities. I would only ask that please take into consideration autonomous driving vehicles and the technologies that are here and that are coming very soon. There will be several surveys that go out, not only with these meetings, but they'll be online, we will hit social media. Everyone will have a chance to participate, both public and elected officials. Very good. Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Regan. I nominate Commissioner Regan. I think this is that you're going to represent us on this.
Don't try to represent well.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, very nice, Matthew. All your hard work.
Next, we have Elizabeth Rowway with Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present. I actually have two pieces of business before you today. One is a proposal for economic development services, and one is regarding a garage in our community. So I will start out with a proposal that you have in front of you first, if that's okay. This is a proposal for economic development services here in Delaware County. I represent the Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. This is an organization that has been in existence since nineteen eighty-six. You've got about seven pages in front of you. I'm not going to go line by line, or we would be here for a hot minute. But I just want to say that we are respectfully submitting this proposal to you for the continuation and enhancement of economic development services. Again, the E D A has been in business for over forty years, and we have been the local economic development organization, otherwise known as the Lido, that the state of Indiana has recognized since nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven. Qualifications for you are on page one. We are a sister organization to the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. We are housed together, we share office space together, but we are two separate organizations. But because of that, we share a board, and that board is comprised of the top business and education leaders in Delaware County. So they're ensuring that the E D A's economic development strategies align with the priorities of stakeholders in our community. Second bullet point on page two, we talk about our staff that we have in economic development. Tracy and I have been doing economic development for over twenty years. And if you want to pull in the very back that little insert that I slid in there, I actually was cleaning my house this weekend and ran across that article that was in the newspaper like twenty years ago, where Tracy and I were going on our training with the Oklahoma University Economic Development Institute. We looked really young there, so I just was excited to see a picture of us looking young. I thought I would share it with you as well. Fiscal responsibility, we are not legally required to do so, but the Economic Development Alliance goes through an annual audit every year to demonstrate financial transparency and accountability to our stakeholders, to make sure that all of our funding is being used appropriately. We talk about regional, statewide, and national partnerships. We are part of the East Central Indiana Development Council. That's a coalition of leaders from eight counties. We work together on regional economic development opportunities, including the Ready Grant that has gone through for the last two cycles. On another note, that's probably the last round of Ready we're going to see in a little while because of financial constraints at the State House. We are part of the International Economic Development Council. They are the premier global association for economic development professionals, and we grab insight from them, I would say, on a weekly basis. We're also part of the Indiana Economic Development Association. That is the statewide network of economic development professionals. Tracy Lutton on our team is serving on the I E D A's Legislative Council right now. And we are also part of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. That's not part of that, we work collaboratively with them on a weekly basis. You can see leadership on boards that we have here, East Central Indiana Regional Partnership, East Central Indiana Planning District, Muncie Industrial Revolving Loan Fund. We serve on committees with the I E D A Legislative Committee, as I said, East Central Indiana Ready. We hold membership in all three of those, the Transatlantic Business Council, I E D A, I E D C. We have done that for the entire existence, going all the way back to nineteen eighty-six. And then on page three, that talks about the Economic Development Alliance here in Delaware County is the longest-tenured economic development organization to hold the accredited economic development designation from the International Economic Development Council. We are also accredited through them every five years. When they came to visit us two years ago, they took notes. The people, the team that came here to make sure that we were doing things appropriately actually took notes, and they sent that to our board and said, not only does this organization function at the highest level, we actually stole ideas to take out when we were going into other communities. We have established relationships with site location consultants. One is actually here today and would like to talk to you about this proposal when I'm finished. We, the I E D C, I know it's a lot of acronyms, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation recognizes the E D A as the local economic development organization for Delaware County. All leads from the state come through our organization. Any lead they get, they filter it through our organization. The reason why they do that is because they, first of all, have the working relationship with us, but also they have transcripts of all of our maps and all the buildings that we have available, and they have done their due diligence. So when a site selector reaches out to a state organization, the state organization will take all of the information that that site selector is looking at, and you will get all kinds of requests. We need, you know, a hundred thousand square foot building, we need to have a rail spur beside it, we need so much water capacity. The state does their due diligence and knows what's available around the state, and they will pick three, four, maybe sometimes ten communities for that site selector to go to. They know us, they know our organization. They know us, they know our organization, they know that we're Johnny on the spot and we give them correct information each and every time. Um, scope of services for this will be a one, one shop, one stop shop for you. Uh, clarity and efficiency, confidentiality. We sign confidentiality agreements. Our entire board does. The reason for that is site selectors don't want information floating around out around the community as far as what may or may not be coming. So, you know, if Ann Taylor decided that they were going to move a manufacturing organization, which I wish they would, but they won't. Um, Ann Taylor doesn't want that out because they don't want every other community across the state reaching out at them and saying, hey, we've got a better spot for you. Uh, comprehensive assistance is on this list. Again, the no conflict of interest. Um, if you accept this proposal, we would also like to have the um Delaware County redevelopment person that you hire underneath our roof. We would like to oversee that for you because Tracy Lutton actually did that job. So whoever the redevelopment commission hires to run that, we would like to um train them for you and make sure that they are doing their due diligence. Um, in addition to that, we all work so collab, we all should work so collaboratively together, that we would like to have them underneath the same roof. Um, page five talks about our services with business attraction and recruitment. That's again with our site selectors, um organizing lead external trips. Um, working with financial legal consulting firms as well as state, local and federal agencies. Uh, we have a BR and EU organization um underneath our roof, which again acronym business retention and expansion. We conduct regular outreach to our businesses to say, hey, what are the pains that you are feeling? Are you thinking about expanding? Let's talk about availability of grants for you. Um, and some of those grants are the manufacturing readiness grants, the next level jobs employer training grant. These are all things that are available at the state level that we're intimately familiar with, that our businesses are not, that's not the world in which they live. Uh, we all, we also do workforce and talent development. We work with Eastern Indiana Works. And the Eastern Indiana Talent Collaborative to attract and retain skilled workers. Uh, page six talks about infrastructure and site planning. Uh, we do, we lead the site planning to prepare for visits, um, for investments for companies that are looking at our area. Uh, and so when we do that, we will pull together a team, we'll pull together all of the utilities. We'll pull together IV tech if we think they might be interested in um some training opportunities. And then we work with local government and utility providers to make sure that what those companies are seeking can be established during our community. Uh, we also engage with state and federal legislators. You've got one that's built in in the organization. That's kind of helpful. Uh, community and quality of life. We also support housing, transportation and other livability initiatives. We just kind of take that on. Um, we've taken that on in the last couple of years. Because we recognize that we can no longer just have economic development without workforce development. We can't really have workforce development if we don't have housing available as well. So we've taken on those initiatives to see how we can be a holistic community to attract new businesses into the area. The funding request that we are asking is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. This is not a raise over what was given um even twelve years ago, not accounting for any kind of inflation. I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the county gave to our organization. Twelve years ago, all the way up through about twenty six years ago. So we are just asking for that funding support. Um, I know that's a lot to ask, but we think that we give you uh a big bang for your buck. Um, we are definitely tried and true. Uh, our last great um attraction that came into our community was Canpat. The, the initial investment for Canpat to come into our community was five hundred million dollars. So if you take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and, and take that five million, five hundred million. We pretty much paid for ourselves for the next, I don't even know how many years, but it will, will be well beyond my retirement. Um, and I also like to tell people that that was not just an initial investment for that building itself. But there is a company, and I told this all the time, I don't want to say which company it was. But Canpat selected a, a local company to fulfill drains, just with the drains in Canpat, a local plumbing company, two million dollars. I mean, those investments filter down. We don't even know the full extent of it. We had a local catering company that catered for Canpat how many months? Twelve? Twelve months. We had a caterer that catered for them and, and actually since they were coming from another country. Learned specific dishes from their country to serve them. That was a big deal for her catering company. That, that really was transformational for her. Um, so again, we are asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And I'm happy to discuss this proposal with you um going forward. Uh, we have Chris Brazler here who would like to chat with you. He actually was the site selector that Canpat chose. Um, to determine where their site would be. After a deep chat, I'm happy to come back up and talk about a garage. Unless you have any specific questions for me right now.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, my name is Chris Brazler. Uh, I run a site selection um business, just happened to be here on another matter, which is somewhat related. Um, but uh, found out a little bit uh about uh what Tracy and Elizabeth are up to. They uh said, what do you think of where we're headed and, and what's going on? Said I can, I can speak a little bit about the experience we have had and the importance of. When I'm looking at a project and I represent packaging companies, uh data center uh companies. As well as some furniture uh manufacturer. Uh, when we looked at uh a potential site selection. Uh, certainly the land is, is important because of the attributes that it might have. Um, but what uh I think was really important in what Elizabeth just said was. We see every state potential from here. In other states and here in Indiana. I have had the experience where you go to the state and the state says. Why don't you look here, here and here? Because they are the most responsive teams. They will be able to give you the clearest messaging. They will be able to give you the information you need quicker, faster, better. They're going to make your job easier. And for people that are in my role, and that triples down to the clients that I work with. Again, stepping onto that property with the information that you require, there's no hidden agendas. Everyone's working on the same team is, is quite imperative and your team is phenomenal. I've done it all over the country and I've done it for many years. This is a very, very special group that you have. I understand they're looking to bring more under that umbrella and I can tell you from other experiences in counties that are disjointed. That the moment the information is not clear and that does start all the way from, do you have enough houses? So that imperative is something that is very much in the forefront of, of site selectors right now. All the way to the infrastructure, even to the redevelopment authority, because. We're always looking for elements within the community that can be a win to reuse something. Because a lot of times it's a lot easier to use, reuse a four corner site than it is to specifically go out and build new, fresh greenfield site. Having that together, uniformity, clarity, transparency, um, is a winning combination. As I said, I've seen it elsewhere where it's not together. And it's like the fish that goes to the hook, smells it and says, no. So uh, just thought if I could help, that's uh one element that I see every day in, in the work that I do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We always like to get those eight. Thank you.
So, oh, go ahead.
No, no.
Comprehensive proposal, appreciate that. Um, I believe in order to provide the commissioners out of the time to digest this. I believe we should take this under advisement. Uh, secondly, uh, we need to research the funding, just like for ECI uh or EEP. Um, and consider funding, whatever funding would come out of the Delaware County Department of Mission. That's what I believe we should do. So are you, do you have a motion to table?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I would, I would table this.
Is it possible we can get a copy of the contract? We already saved one. Tell me agenda on the contract and then the, the way there's going to be one that up there.
Yep. We have a motion to the table in a second. Can you call roll please? Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And if you could send an electronic version of that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Our email is down. It's been down since Friday morning. I'm twitchy. I have, I have no idea what's going on in the world. I'm twitchy. Okay. Thank you for that. So um also here uh for economic development organization business. Um, I'm coming to you today to talk about four twelve North Martin Avenue, which is a parking garage at the Village Promenade. So that's the big parking garage out on the campus. And I'm pretty sure that like the uh Acai Bowl Place is right in front of it. It's a landlocked parcel. And um, there has been a massive snafu in our world. Um, so we have on this property, um, the original form for our tax exempt status is not found anywhere. Although I know it was filed because I have the Form one thirty six in our world. That basically asks for the, the change to the property. So this goes all the way back to twenty twelve. When the county redevelopment person at the time structured this deal. That's the paperwork we cannot find for the original tax exemption. But again, we do know that it was filed because there was a secondary form um that was filed when the actual garage was created. So the original was just for the land and so I do have a copy of Form one thirty six and um the auditor's office had that as well. And that was filed by Rona Buttry at our organization in twenty fourteen. That basically said the land has been changed. There is a garage on there. We're asking for a tax exemption. There was a tax exemption then for our nonprofit. Um, and I should give you a little, little bit of history as well. Um, that got rebonded with the city and MRC. And now that garage is also tied up in the bonds with the convention Sanos Garage. So this is, this, this eventually, again, because of snafu and I, and this snafu was in our office. We do know that. So uh, the assessor's office sent um an email out to an employee in our office. In twenty twenty two, early twenty two, I arrived April first in twenty twenty two. And, and the employee never responded to it. She's no longer with us. We, we know this. That email requested that a new Form one thirty six be filed. By, I don't even remember what the date was, in April or in, in twenty twenty two. It was not filed. So at that point in time, this got placed back, the, the taxation status changed. And we were, we were, we were beginning to get taxable sent to us. This is very unbelievable. It has been so gracious in trying to help us because this has just been a real mess. The bottom line is we've gone through the process. I've been working with the auditor's office, oh my gosh, since. June of twenty twenty three. We have reached out to the state. The state has said, of course, this property cannot go to the tax sale. This is a municipality owned organize, or, or, you know, facility. It's a landlocked. It is tax exempt. The state auditor's office has indicated that since we missed the process to go in and say, this was an error on our part. All we needed to do was come and humbly beg for forgiveness from the commissioners for this to be removed. And this taxation status be renewed. Now, we have also then filed the one twenty form, which is the original. On all of, all of the properties that we hold um on behalf of the city, county, any property that we are holding. We have filed that form. That was filed um at the end of the year for all of our properties. I'll also say that there is um, there's a gray area in state code. And um, you could read it that the, that you have to fill out these forms every two years. And others read it that you do not have to. There is a bill moving through the legislature right now to correct this. So we will never have to deal with this again. We will just simply have to show our nonprofit tax status on, on any property that might slip through the tax. But today I'm here to humbly ask that the commissioners forgive this tax that is owed. Because we were a tax exempt organization when it was purchased. We were a tax exempt um organization when the building was built. And we have remained a tax exempt organization ever since. So I'm here to ask for forgiveness of both of the taxes.
Thank you. Clarifying question. Um, so you did not pay any property taxes. On four twelve North Martin, which is the village parking garage in twenty fourteen until twenty twenty two?
Correct.
Okay. And then all of a sudden, property taxes were assessed?
Correct.
To the nonprofit?
Correct. And then it was placed on the um tax sale. And then the mayor went in and I don't know, I think he paid a hundred dollars to just make sure it was removed from the tax sale. And so that exempted us. At least there was a, there was a good faith effort to show we were trying to remedy the problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to um try to remedy this. However. I think um, the assessor and John are both working on this. At some point, I think I want to discuss with them some of their issues before we actually make. Do you know what the timeline is there?
I believe they have until July first to make their final payment for their rest of the tax. I've not been made aware of any of the follow up that she just talked about and I'm the one that worked on it. So. I, I have no new information that he mentioned that there is a decision from the state that this property qualifies as being tax exempt. I've been provided no documentation as to that. But you haven't been able to talk to the state down there to see who's sitting on it or? There is no one at the state sitting on anything. This is at a local level. I thought you said, he, he said that.
Well, I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure this gets clarified before we make that decision is my point. I'm, again, I'm willing to, to forgive them a bit, but I need the appropriate paperwork. And I want to make sure the assessor, our legal counsel is okay with it. So do you know where it stands with the assessor right now?
Where it stands is we're waiting on payment. I've not been, nobody has contacted me since that hundred dollar payment was made. So as it stands right now, that hundred dollar payment was just to remove it from the tax bill. There was no other way to remove it unless there was an agreement in place with the county to do so, to make the payment. So as of right now, they have until July first to pay their tax bill.
So the agreement with the county was done by the treasurer Brad Holt and the mayor, who represents the Muncie Redevelopment Commission. A hundred dollars to give them to remove the tax.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I think that, that's basically where it stands. So I mean, high level, we have a property that didn't have any property taxes for, for around ten years.
And then the statute changed.
Statute did change.
Requiring filing, so the assessor's office contacted them and said, which they did not have to. Said you have not filed your paperwork. No one responded. And there is an appeal deadline. They did not file an appeal. That's fatal. So it would be interesting to note that we at the time held twenty three properties. And only a handful were removed from the nonprofit status. We don't understand that, but regardless, this one was certainly an error.
Definitely some inconsistencies all around. So the amount we're talking about, I believe, is two hundred and seventy four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and sixty six cents minus a hundred dollars?
Correct.
I don't, I don't disagree. I want to hear from a legal counsel, but you know, to me, I'm in sense and I understand the legalities of it. Well, I don't understand the legalities of it, so I want to get up to speed is. Properties didn't have property taxes assessed to them. Let's make it up. There's twenty. How many, how many properties did that estimate? Twenty?
Uh, forty, yes.
Forty. And three or four of them got all of a sudden taken off the rolls.
Correct.
And now we have a large tax bill. So I want to make sure you're legal and everything around that. That's why I would entertain a motion.
I have seconded a motion and I, and I want to be productive. Okay, so Sherry made the motion, table this. Uh, Christian Brand second, roll filters. Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mike Reagan?
Yeah.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next we have the uh twenty twenty five aerial imagery funding.
Hello, my name is Kyle Johnson, Chief Information Officer, Office of Information to G I Service. So I am here asking for four thousand dollars to help uh cover some of the costs of our twenty twenty five aerial photo project. So every two years, uh, we try to get new aerial imagery. We've been doing that over the last dozen or so years. Um, the company that does that for us is Eagleview. Um, this flight is the third in a series of three on the current contract. This will end up in current contract. Um, the full cost of the flight is ninety three thousand dollars and change. Um, we primarily fund this through our GIS fund, which is a non-reverting fund that is shared with my office and the bank commission. Um, because it's a GIS data set and used for transportation, it's eligible for eighty percent reimbursement. We run that through their office, get eighty percent of that total purchase price back. So. And to keep it sustainable every two and to keep it sustainable every two years, what we do is go and ask a variety of agencies um to help fund that, the small amounts from every agency, about a dozen um to help cover that twenty percent cost to keep that amount in our GIS fund. So it's sustainable every few years. Um we go to assessor, the auditor, bank commission put money in, county engineer, uh Muncie sanitary district, county downtown, uh city of Muncie, and then we also reach out to economic development partners to help as well. About a dozen agencies that we ask a small a small amount to help cover that. This is like you said, we've been doing this for like some time. Uh the first digital arrow photos were captured in nineteen ninety nine. So yeah, we've been doing it for a while. A two year cycle seems to work well for our community in terms of growth. Um you'd be surprised how much has changed since twenty twenty three. There's a lot of development. The arrow photo is the base of our GIS. We use that to update all the other data.
So you're asking for four thousand dollars. Do you know which add up only purpose from the funds?
Uh we have contractual.
Yeah.
We have contractual money.
We have that plan there.
I do.
I mean, I'm certainly can find one that has been planned there.
So there's nothing in the IT um maybe project three?
It is ethical, that's for sure.
How much can that be worth?
Well, for this year, we have a hundred thousand, but you know, it's only six months ago until we get the new ones and you wait until it.
You're asking for four thousand, is that correct?
He said we split it.
I'd make a motion to approve and we need to find the money in our edit plans. It's four thousand dollars. It's important.
Yeah.
I heard uh an ask of the county council uh last week too. So it sounds like everybody else is signing on.
I'd motion to approve this agreement. A second rule call please. Professor Regan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
McHenry?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Next we have the AT and T contract with Mr. Fluke.
Good morning, commissioners. Jim Fluke from the IP department. Uh what you have in front of you today is the renewal of an AT and T contract for the uh bush ethernet between the eleven sites that the county has uh that we provide internet service to and uh where they also have all the data transferred transported back from the uh IP center here. Uh that contract was originally put in in January of twenty twenty. Um and with that, they've um told me and I've given you a listing of all the sites, but uh they say the increase there's there's no increase on this particular agreement from the original. Um the contract now is five thousand forty fifty four dollars and seventy eight cents a month, which is sixty one thousand five hundred and ninety nine dollars and eighty four cents a year. And this service and this service provides all the connectivity to all the eleven locations that we have uh county facilities at. This has to be signed by July seventeenth of this year?
Yes.
Where where did we take the money from for the commissioners completely before starting the budget? You know, what done or?
I would think I would know three, three lines of true love. And when we make our new edit plan, I wish we would give out these more than we.
But I think some of these may be included in the budget too, the budget process as well. But sir, sir, I'll go back to the last discussion. Just want to take this in under advisement.
I I would very very much agree with you on that. But I thought I'd do it.
Yeah, the same advice.
And it is the same thing. This is a sixty month agreement too, uh just like the original one. So sir, we do have a light item in the budget for this.
Any big amount of that's probably what I can give me? We can take it if you want to do more research.
Did you make a motion?
No. I will. I'm going to make a uh I'm going to start to find it.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the second?
Yeah.
I have a second rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yeah.
Professor Regan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Um next we have a contract with IPW. Indiana Pump Works. Professor?
Yep. So Indiana Pump Works has been working on the wet well out of Justice Center. And um had some issues out there. I think the uh when the new jail was built, the wet well that was there for the original Wilson Building was expanded. And there was a uh process put in between the jail and our wet well that's a people call it a grinder, but I don't believe that it actually is. Uh it's nicknamed the muffin monster. That's what makes care of a whole bunch of things out there. Uh I've spent quite a bit of time out there uh over the last uh few weeks with uh Zach Kraus, who's here from Indiana Pump Works. Um the pumps in the wet well are also not grinder pumps. People call them grinder pumps and they're not. They're solids pumps with a cutter bar that's could be designed better. And um you know, we have a lot of problems right now. I think the muffin monster failed, which caused contributed to the two pumps in the wet well failing. In addition to the control panel out there, it has an air compressor and the air compressor is used to aerate the wet well, which you need. But that air compressor inside that control cabinet created condensation and in this cold weather, it all froze in there. There are icicles hanging from inside that control panel and it has, I believe that's what picked up the control board. I believe that. When you look at the connections in that control panel, all the copper connections are black, which indicates attraction and moisture. All that stuff's going to have to be redone. So I asked Zach Kraus from Indiana Pump Works to put together a uh a monthly uh service agreement here and all service agreements would be to come in front of commissioners. And Zach is here to uh present or answer any questions as we have them, but our proposal would be that we adopt this and have them come the next three months in a row and service that also provide us with an update. And then maybe once we get the connections fixed, the control board is actually in order to be in the fix right now to get reinstalled in the control panel, relocate the compressor to a poly box that's adjacent to or attached to the outside of the control panel. And then we have two new pumps on order too. They're improved, but they're still not grinder pumps. So this, you know, we've spent probably sixty eight, seventy thousand dollars on this thing in the last couple of months. And this is still not the right solution.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just so disappointed that um because I'd never heard about this um um solution.
That deregger that you have in front of you right there, that is technology to reverse the pumps. What happens is things get flushed down the toilet and the pumps stall and then they kick out, kick on, kick out, kick on, but they don't have a pump anything. And that technology is to reverse the pumps and then try to get them to pump again.
That'll help.
That's an additional thing. So Zach, anything you want to add from what I introduced?
So uh first of all, good morning. Um kind of what you and I discussed at the courthouse, this is kind of a solution for the symptom, not a long term solution for the root cause. However, I I think this is a good starting place to see how the station will act once we implement everything that's that's in front of you now.
Yep. And we have to fix those copper connections, get the moisture out of the control panel immediately, or the control panel is going to fail again, which can cause the pumps to fail again, which we just spent thirty five thousand dollars getting two new pumps, which will be in by when? The two new pumps?
Spring March eleventh in the eighteen.
Okay, what's your, I'd make a motion to uh adopt or award this uh service contract estimated labor is eleven hundred a month. That's estimated, so it won't exceed that, right?
Correct.
And um get get them to come the next three months and give us a report. And then we can probably stretch that out maybe once a quarter and then.
And maybe by then we'll have our edit funded.
Very possible.
ARP.
ARP, ARP. Right. I agree with you.
Do you have a motion to approve the contract of have a second? A motion to approve the contract in a second rule call please. Professor Regan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um so Corson Contract?
Yeah, Corson uh is uh one of our providers for fire and security and they have an auto renewal contract, which I'm a big fan of auto renewal contracts. So I asked for all the twenty twenty four service reports which were sent to us and I review them in detail. And I also asked them to provide a twenty twenty five service agreement, which they haven't done yet. Uh we do have a meeting coming up. I called them in to review. So that's the update as I have it right now. I would make a motion uh that we tabled the Corson Service Agreement until such time that I can have a meeting with them and then they can provide us with a updated twenty twenty five service agreement that will then come before all three commissioners.
Hey, we have a motion to table the Corson Contract in a second rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Regan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next we have the IU Health Master Agreement.
This is just our IU Health Master Agreement that we get every year on the cost of what we're spending and just ask that you sign that. Do you have any questions?
Is this for the clinic?
Yes, for the clinic.
Okay, so.
The price about the same. It went up four percent.
This is named, so Pam and I met with the clinic at the clinic on January seventeen. And we introduced to them all the complaints that were coming from the employees and and their dependents that are using the clinic. And during that meeting, I asked for a number of deliverables um metrics that they said that they had, but we still haven't received.
Oh, okay.
Right?
No, I've not received them.
No, I haven't received them either. And then I've had more complaints since then. When does this have to be approved?
It's uh December first, twenty four. Let me see. I don't know that she took. They just said December. Well, I would say this is their quarterly report. So I would say just as soon as possible. There's not a date on here.
Yeah, and this has I'll be honest with you. I'm sick of that. Um I want, I would like, I can do it if nobody else wants to do it. I would like to work with Pam and try to get a price from all the other, I mean, there's more than one clinic down town. I'd like to get a price from uh who went the other times? Uh I'm not against that. I I've never used the clinic, so I don't know if I'm sick of it or not.
I guess I'm tired of the complaints. I'm I'm I don't use it either, but I'm I'm sick of the complaints as well.
And we should say have they multiplied recently? Is there new staff? Maybe they were. They have hired another doctor since we've been here. Even and uh another nurse practitioner is coming in. Their problem is out there the wait time. I mean, it's just awful the wait time.
So is there is there like a doctor and a nurse practitioner working now?
There's two doctors and a nurse practitioner on the one side, on the urgent side, there's two, one and a half doctors, same way.
Was just like one doctor?
Yeah. And no, not for the whole clinic. The the urgent side has one doctor and one nurse practitioner. And then the workplace health partners is as we know it.
Yeah.
Has um two doctors. Now they just hired another one.
Okay, because there was just one.
Yeah, Doctor Hill was doing it all. I know it's impossible for them to do that. So he they have, they cannot get people hired. They cannot get people hired. That seems to be the consensus of everyone out there.
I do believe it's gotten worse to your point. I think when this was located uh on Tillotson.
Oh, absolutely.
The clinic is better now that it's been consolidated with the urgent care. I think that Delaware County and whoever the city uses to.
The city and the school.
I I believe we're funding their urgent care efforts and it's hurting the uh clinic here.
We were all very spoiled with the other clinic.
Well, it's the same. It's the same deal, right? Still IU Health.
It is, but we didn't have the urgent care.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I think when they added the urgent care, I believe we're funding their urgent care there, right? And I I I agree a hundred percent. Like, I mean, there's, we have two more in town. Let's let's talk, let's
Okay.
Let's talk to them. So questions that you need to take back. I want those deliverables that I asked for on January seventeen. She took copious notes and so did I. I'll be glad to give you a copy of my notes. When does this have to be signed? When does this, when does a decision have to be made? And then I'll add one more comment. This is this is a way out there discussion, but I have have had one initial discussion with Jamie Vane at our health department. And we're thinking around the idea of possibly using the health department as our employee clinic. I don't know what kind of services we can provide there, but what I need are those deliverables from IU to know how many people use it, what they use it for, a lot of the prescriptions, a lot of, you know, a lot of the diagnoses. I don't want to see names, but I need to give that information to our health department so we can look and see what would it take to put the service in place. I'm not talking about replacing urgent care, but we already have a health department that's great inside with the with the space and
Yeah, we talk about that.
Why couldn't we use our own health department as a clinic to get away from the stuff we're sitting on?
What are the hours out there now? At day open at eight and close at six. I've just, I've yes, my days. The urgent care is open on Saturday.
I have one more thing. I was, it's been about a week and a half. I forgot it. I got a text from an employee said that their son had a hundred and four degree fever, young young kid. So um said they'd been waiting a couple of two and a half hours. I was only a few, I was only a few miles away and I went. I went to the clinic and there were more people working the front desk than there were working in the back.
Okay.
And I went, yep, told them who I was, told them I wanted to look and I can't believe they let me in. But they did. And there are more people working the front desk than there were working in the back. And that that employee's wife and son have been sitting there two and a half hours.
It's it's awful and I I feel for him. It's awful. It's awful. We get called every day.
I make a motion to table.
I got that.
A motion to table this agreement in a second rule call please. Professor Regan?
Yes.
Professor Brand?
Absolutely.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um the the cell tower agreement, who wanted to discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, this would be a good time. Questions about that.
John's not shit.
I I brought it with me. Um so last month we did uh an agreement with Crown Castle. And John watched the meeting and came back with some comments specifically about the length of the term, asking about whether we approved thirty years or twenty years and asking commissioners if we would agree uh to continue to negotiate for twenty years. And um I believe that we need to make a motion to clarify and have a clean record that we're specifically approving AT and T as the subtenant on the cell tower at the highway department. Um and uh we would need a second for that.
And just for clarity, I think the technical name of the less evil is C C A T T L L C.
Can you say that again?
C C A T T L L C.
That's who we're adding to the cell tower?
Yeah, that's what's on this Crown Castle lease um for the subtenant that they sent us. So I want to just make sure that's in the address.
So my motion is to approve AT and T uh subtenant on the cell tower at the highway department doing business as C C A T T L L C. And we give permission for John to continue to negotiate towards a twenty year contract rather than a thirty.
I got that.
Do you get that motion?
Ed? Yes, we have a second rule call please. Professor Regan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh all the ordinance for first reading, ordinances for second reading. Um there's a motion. We have a resolution for approval, resolution amended resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners to establish some policies with figures protect the forum foster the effective administration of public meetings. So I don't know who's prepared to talk about this. I'm glad to jump in if no one else wants to talk about it. This, do you have anything?
It's a few. This is the the form for the public meetings. It addresses your public hearings in your public meetings. Um it's
So there was a new statute um passed recently by the state. And this brings us up up to date there. I do have a couple of just discussion points uh under section B, one B. Um it says currently members of the public may speak during a public meeting as required by the statutes. Maybe that language as required by the statutes might be better as allowed by state statute and we specifically point out that state statute since this is why we're updating it, correct? And then in C, um the commissioners at their sole discretion may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting to discuss. And I think we should drop the words to discuss and just leave it free. The commissioners at their sole discretion may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting, during which time individuals may give an op address the question. And then significant change here from the fact And then significant change here from the practice that the commissioners have had in the past in section I. Um, it says, uh, each speaker may only speak once and will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak unless a short period of time is set forth by the commissioners at the start of the public comment period. Here's the change. Time may not be reserved or yielded to other speakers. And once an individual has finished speaking, that individual's remaining time, if any, is waived. That's a change from that practice. I, um.
Yeah, I have questions that, that we should, I mean, I, I'm okay with yielding someone else.
Okay. You can clear that?
I think that one out. I'm not part of it.
Don't take it for out.
Just that part of it for the yielding?
Yeah.
But it says time may not be used or yielded.
What do you want, move, turn it on? No, um.
You want it to be the time maybe?
No, we don't, we don't want time in that. We don't want anyone to be able to do that. Leave it in.
Oh, just.
Let's leave it in, yes, right. And then under section R, it states the Delaware County Sheriff shall be empowered to remove an attendee and/or speaker from the meeting if the speaker and/or attendee refuses to leave when directed by the president of the board of commissioners. So I reached out to the sheriff and asked him if he would, you know, for his response. And, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, on his response, um, basically said, um, I'm not placing her. The sheriff's office would be willing to enforce this as long as a person was clear and obvious public nuisance or, or has committed a crime. Um, so, you know, we don't want, we don't need any overzealous board members trying to silence somebody. It needs to be obvious and this gives them three warnings. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That, I, I think it needs to, uh, it doesn't say that anywhere, but actually.
O has been.
O has the number of warnings, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Again, yeah, the president of the board of commissioners may issue up the three warnings to the attending. And it says may issue, yeah, you could go, I'm good with that. You could go DEFCON three, run it, I'm good with, okay. Do you want to table this until I get the correction?
I.
You can approve it in.
I think I would approve. I would like to make a motion to approve the language in B, C, and leave I. Okay. Have a motion to approve the resolution pending the changes. Now, second?
Second.
A motion is second. Rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
All right, uh, next, we have, um, department heads elected officials.
Good morning, commissioners. Carrie from the Delaware County Highway Department. I talked with Commissioner Brand this morning. We do have an open position that is going to be opening up at the highway. It is a payroll clerk. Um, he wanted me to bring that to your attention and ask for your blessing to rehire.
I'm good with it. You have got an open position, right?
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Eddie.
Good morning. Andrew Ramirez, Judge of Delaware City, District Two since, uh, first of the year. Commissioner Brand invited me this morning to kind of outline, say in person to the commissioners as well as to the general public, all the changes uh, that have been implemented recently with our juvenile justice system here in Delaware County and with the detention center with which you are all involved. Um, Delaware County, uh, withdrew from the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, uh, program, uh, state, state-run program. Uh, withdrew on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and that was to more effectively and efficiently, uh, focus our time, energy, efforts on localized partnerships, establishing and maintaining those, uh, as well as local opportunities and local initiatives. Uh, Delaware County have been participating in the JDI state program since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, this decision was not one just of myself, rather the, uh, juvenile probation department, juvenile board, and myself, that not, uh, consideration and discussion, uh, came to this, uh, decision. Additionally, there have been some immediate changes with regard to the, um, Delaware County Detention Center, uh, with regards to, uh, juvenile detention. Effective immediately, there have been, uh, three offenses, uh, which have been designated for automatic immediate detention at time of arrest, uh, that being dangerous possession of a firearm, uh, resisting law enforcement in a vehicle, as well as, uh, certain battery offenses, felony-level battery offenses, including resulting in moderate bodily injury, uh, injury to a pregnant woman, uh, battery with a deadly weapon, and battery on a public safety official. A decision was made with regards to safety, not only of the juveniles, law enforcement, and the community, uh, in general. Lastly, in that being said, we are, uh, figuring out a time, uh, that would work best for everyone, our community stakeholders, um, the court, probation, prosecutor, public defender, uh, commissioners, community stakeholders to come together and redesign the detention screening pool that we are utilizing with regards to what juveniles get contained at the detention center. And so we look forward to working with you all, uh, our community stakeholders and the public in general with regards to, uh, improving and making our juvenile justice system here in Delaware County more sustainable. Thank you.
Great idea, Judge. Thank you for your, uh, your update. Any other department heads elected officials? You guys received your February Ways and Measures Report?
Did.
Okay, next we'll go to claims. We have the payment of claims of one million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. I'll second it. I just want to make a couple of comments. In the last meeting, I didn't approve the claims due to lack of, um, descriptions. And they improved over the last two weeks, which I appreciate, but there's still quite a few descriptions missing. Um, in our claims, as you're going to see today, there's a names keeper's tax of about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, there were credit cards, claims of seventeen thousand dollars, dirts with no descriptions. Um, the wet well was in there, Sherri, that you asked about the thirty-five thousand. That's the muffin monster that I talked about a minute ago. And then for the surveyor's office, we have, there's eighteen thousand dollars of the drainage in here. And then there's a wheel tax, uh, of a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
I wonder if that was the new, um, but usually we don't say anything else.
And so this is the muffin monster that is installed. So you have, you have the jail and the muffin monster and the wet well. The muffin monster in the middle failed. That, that got replaced, uh, maybe a month and a half, a few months.
And, and, um, honor your account. Appreciate it. Um, on the electric bills, which I do watch quite often, on the second line under description, I would like the location there. And I know that utilities all come through you. You don't receive them from the department anymore like we used to do. I don't know what you, I thought we were, we thought we were trying to.
Some of those shows.
Yes, okay. But I really would like locations because I do like some of their. Like, uh, on the description, reasonable, of our reports, sort of down by location. Yeah, I make my own report, I guess.
Get a lot of transfers from, um, uh, health department into, uh, the, uh, is, uh, is, is that, I don't know, I, I don't know. I can't, can't. I have to back that up. If you don't mind, if you don't mind finding out, let us, obviously.
Never seen it.
I've never seen that one. And so I appreciate the increased number of descriptions that are in there. It helps me understand, it's helping the public understand, and I think it's also driving a lot of discussion. I've had department heads come and ask questions about the things after they've seen the descriptions. So I think this is a helping, a helping.
More I can, yeah, I think.
So I, I said, so we have a motion in a second to play the claim, pay the claims, rule call please. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
No.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
That payment of our claims of, uh, thirty-five thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty-one cent in the, in second, and that is for the muffin monster. That is the, this system between the jail and the wet well. Do we have a motion to pay the claims for that in a second? Rule call please. Professor Brand?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next, we have payment of payroll for two, twenty-six and twenty-five, one million fifty-four thousand three hundred ninety dollars and forty-one cent. And I'll second it. And I would like to remind, uh, everybody that, you know, this is super important that we pay people correctly and on time. That's the one thing we shouldn't mess up. And I understand that this payroll was error free. If that's not true, I would like for somebody to let me know, but thank you. Let's keep up the good work. Okay, so we have a motion to pay the payroll in a second. Rule call please. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Next, we have, uh, public comments. We have, uh, Linda Hanson.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Linda Hanson, fourteen hundred West North Street. Um, I'm speaking for League of Women Voters. And I want to thank, uh, Stephen Brand for bringing us up to date on where the ordinance is for solar. Um, but I have a question and, uh, I want to confirm that it is still on target for April third, uh, meeting, a special meeting with the, uh, federal planning.
Yeah, I believe our deadline is the seventeenth of March and in my communication with John, uh, recently, I believe we're still on target for that as of today.
Okay, so it will, it will be released to the public ten days before that meeting, so we have a chance to get them all, okay? Um, and my other question, my other question is, who, who was working on the ordinance? You mentioned you and, um, Oops and.
And now it's starting to involve the planning person.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a nod. How, how do you guys fill up that timeline? I don't, I don't, it's getting, it's getting tight. So I, I want to be clear. I want to try to make the timeline we suggested last month, but that may not, that may not happen. It may get pushed back another month. So I just want, I'll be clear. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that could, it'll get pushed back. I just want to be clear. That's why I say we're on ti, we're on target as of today. All right, next we have, uh, Cheryl Dawson.
Good morning, everyone. Um, my name is Cheryl Dawson. I'm at zero twenty-eight and Wheeling Avenue and on one hand, I'm apologizing for being here again, talking about solar. Um, I know we're all kind of tired of that, but, um, but also thank you for the possibility even come here and speak in person. Um, I just have a question and a comment. Um, my question is, Mr. Brand, Commissioner Brand, you'd mentioned you had seen a map recently, or you saw a map recently of the solar project along twenty-eight is where the setbacks applied. And since I'm adjacent to that, would it be possible for me to see that somehow?
I believe so. It was actually on display at Cornerstone Center for the Arts. It was a public meeting. They had probably a two-by-three poster board with that map. So it had a yellow outline of all the properties that are signed up in the solar. In Horton, there are nine property owners signed up. The largest one is a company that isn't even based here in Indiana, so, you know, if they receive income tax, it won't even come here, right? There won't be any lit associated with it. But inside that, they had these purple, uh, shapes that were the proposed layout of the solar panels, uh, considering the five hundred foot setbacks. So the short answer is yes. I don't have a copy of that map, but I can try to get one.
Oh, that, I would appreciate it since I'm right next to it. And my other comment has to do with eminent domain. The gentleman here, two weeks ago, had the photo showing that a project in Illinois had spread considerably and he commented it was the eminent domain. And I have been worried about this since I'm adjacent to it and I actually inquired with my attorney about the possibility of that happening. And he said that if the project ownership would end up in the hands of a public, a designated public utility, then absolutely it would be a possibility that they proclaim eminent domain, uh, for the people who have signed leases as well as for adjacent landowners. So this was my concern. And I sent an article to Commissioner Brand, uh, week before last about an article in Kansas where they currently have a bill in the state house, uh, for this very reason, to prohibit eminent domain, uh, to build or expand projects, uh, that are solar. And they are, my understanding is they already passed a law pertaining to the wind projects in the state of Kansas. And currently they're discussing in their state house a bill to prohibit the use of eminent domain to expand these solar projects. And something like that, I know this is the county, uh, venue here and not a state. It's probably something that would definitely be at the state level. Um, and the verbiage I also sent to Commissioner Brand.
That's all the time you have. Thank you. Uh, Tim Nickel, did you still hear? Just, you did leave. All right, um, that's all of the, um, public comments we had signed up for. Um, Ms. Reagan, you have a final comment?
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, the IDEA conference, um, been going on for a few years and it's going to be held out of all state on March the eighth and it's, um, the sign up, they'd like you to sign up, but they are going to feed you, but it's just a way where people can go and learn about how to make their neighborhood a little bit stronger, um, with things going on in neighborhoods nowadays, so they can be aware. And then also, I gave you a bill, man, um, Delaware County will be having their two, two hundred years old bicentennial in twenty twenty-seven and Tuesday, March eighteenth at six-thirty at Men and Preston. They are having together that anyone who would like to come and learn how they can participate or what's going to be happening. But it's just an open meeting where we will be hearing from another county how they celebrated theirs. So they'll be here before you know it, but that's March eighteenth, six-thirty, Tuesday night, Men and Preston. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ren?
I have a little bit more than that. Um, take-home vehicle policy eligibility. I gave, uh, the commissioners a copy and I'll read it here. I'd like to see, uh, some language that, uh, clearly defines eligibility for a take-home vehicle. So, um, it's already in our, uh, handbook about must live in Delaware County and there are a few current exceptions which I don't agree with, but they're there. Um, so must live in Delaware County, uh, regular travel after normal work scheduled hours and to be, to define regular, at least twice a week, uh, where you would have regular travel after normal workout, scheduled hours for Delaware County business. And if you're called out to perform job duties on behalf of the county at least eight times a month, which is twice a week in general. I know there are thirteen weeks and a quarter, but uh, on average, there are four weeks in a, in a month. And this would be documented, which is also required in our current, in our current handbook. So I would like to see that language added to our handbook policy.
I personally, and I, I emailed you this, I personally, uh, am okay with this with the exception of I want to exclude emergency vehicles. Um, I, I just don't want to get into the whole emergency vehicle, um, the emergency vehicle. I, I think it muddies the water with sheriff's department and the sheriff and the emergency service people have to have their vehicles and, um, you know, when we call. I'll disagree. So to be clear on emergency, you're talking sheriff, nine-one-one, EMS and EMA. Yeah, anything with a facing forward red light. So I'd like, I don't know, Daniel, should I make a motion to adopt this into our handbook and then we'll review it in the handbook meeting this week?
Yeah, that'd be fine. And I, I.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to, to adopt this language for eligibility. A motion and a second. Rule call please. Give me a copy of that. Professor Reagan?
Yeah.
Professor Brand?
Yes.
Professor Henry?
Yes.
Uh, some additional updates. Um, uh, State of the City address is this Thursday, uh, seven AM to nine AM at the Rising Convention Center. Good way to go and see what's going on in our city. Uh, making good progress with the artificial intelligence, uh,
Uh, making good progress with the artificial intelligence. Uh, Alder Carroll and myself, Matt Dance, have had a couple of meetings with the Google folks, so that's ongoing. Uh, we have a new employee starting as a building superintendent. His name's Don Chambers. Uh, he comes to us from a good, diverse background of good hands-on work, and this is not a guy that's gonna check in his school belt. He's gonna work right along the folks. I believe his start date is no later than March thirteenth. Uh, for some reason, if his current employer says you can go sooner, we would take him sooner. Um, Commissioner Reagan mentioned AEP and the, and the electric bills. I have, uh, asked Sarah, and she has now gathered all of our meter numbers, all the electric bills that we pay in the county. And I'll be reviewing, uh, sit down to review with AEP, uh, sure soon, the tariff rates on every one of our meters. And I pretty much guarantee we're gonna find opportunities in the amount of usage that we're doing, that amount of power factor protection that we're not doing, and that we're not on the right tariff rates in some cases. I do believe that this will result in saving us some money. Um, paving at the Justice Center, uh, we, the commissioners approved last year to pave the front lot. Uh, that will be done near the end of April, once the asphalt plants open up. Uh, the Highway Department did go out, and so I thank Tommy and Troy and the team for going out, uh, late last week and filling in some of those huge holes that are out there. And we may go out and do some grooming and try to clean that up a little bit. Uh, but I have asked for a meeting with, uh, Mr. Mike Shelley from E and B Paving. Uh, I'll meet with him in the next couple of weeks. Anybody that wants to be in that meeting is welcome to be there. I am gonna have Tommy Humbert in that meeting to review the scope of work. Because there is, uh, there are some areas where there's ponding of the water, specifically right next to the sidewalk tonight. And, uh, that freezes in the wintertime and creates a hazard which we must continuously salt. And it's hard to keep up with the weather that we had here recently. So I'd like to see that sloped away and then review the striping plan. We may make that front parking lot, uh, one-way and put the parking towards the outside. So the parking would be up next to the, um, concrete, like, to the sidewalk. But we would leave a big gap in the middle for a, an unloading area. So what happens out there today is UPS or Mid-Bus and things, they come and stop, and it impedes traffic. So we'll create a little pull-off there in that parking that's, uh, adjacent to the, to the sidewalk. So that meeting will be happening here in a couple of weeks. Um, the dependent, um, independent benefits audit that's going on, I believe there have been some questions from people, good questions. I appreciate your concerns. I saw HR send out some clarifications to those questions this morning. We Royal sent those out. Uh, this is something that, uh, like I said in the last meeting, we put in place with Apex Benefits. I do expect we'll find folks on our benefits that aren't eligible beyond the benefits, and we'll address those on a face-by-face basis. Um, there was an amended budget sent to the county, uh, from the DLGF, um, late last week. So I don't know if we'll be seeing updated budget books or what. I haven't read it in detail yet to know where the funding changed. I don't know if it increased or decreased. I'm just telling everybody there was an amended budget thing from the DLGF. Um, we're gonna start a continuous improvement initiative, so I think the employee of the month is off the ground good. I'd like to start a continuous improvement initiative. I'll call it CI squared. And anybody that wants to participate, the purpose of this committee would be to add value and reduce costs to a better, better service or a better price. And I'll be, uh, sharing some details of that coming up soon. Audio update, the speakers for the room here. I believe those are gonna be, the hardware will be delivered later this week. And then we'll get a plan in place to get those, uh, get those implemented. And we started a strategic finance committee with the auditor, the treasurer, and commissioners to put a strategic financing plan in place. The last strategic plan the county had expired, I believe, in twenty twenty. So we haven't really had a, a plan in place since then. Uh, we'll, we'll need to possibly secure financing in the future, bonds, and this would help us establish a bond rating. So I'm excited about that. We've also started a strategic IT committee with, uh, Jim Luke and Matt Dance, David By on Jim Luke's team, and, uh, myself. So we've got some good things going there, trying to, uh, modernize some of our IT infrastructure. Uh, performance evaluations, we rolled that out first of the year with the staff meetings that, uh, that are being held in January and February. Our next staff meeting is next Monday, so it's always the second Monday of the month. Um, those evaluations were due today. So the, the goal there was to have people self-evaluate, get those turned in to their department head or their supervisor. Um, I did grant a, an extension to the Highway Department due to all the weather and things that they had people out on the roads and going around. But those are due in two weeks, so hopefully the performance evaluations, at least the self-performance, the self-evaluations are done. Um, also due today was the signage on county, county-owned vehicles and the GPS. For those, I don't know if that's complete yet or not, but I'll be doing a review, uh, of that. Um, I think that is it. Very good. Thank you. Um, the last thing on the agenda is, um, unfortunately, Angie Moyer has decided to, uh, take new direction in life, so she's not gonna be with us any longer after twenty-nine years of service. And Angie's done a tremendous job for this county, and quite honestly, has brought millions of dollars to this county in grant money. And, um, you know, the old saying is, anyone can be replaced. Well, we're, we're not gonna be able to replace that, I'm sorry. Um, there, there's, she's got a lot of knowledge. Um, she always has, uh, I've been here ten years, going to eleven, she's always steered us in the right direction. And, um, I just, on behalf of the county and, and all the residents in the county, uh, we appreciate all your hard work, uh, throughout the years. And, um, uh, it's, it's hard to lose you, so I just, I just wanna say thank you. I do have a, I do have a certificate here. Um, I always said you worked twenty-nine years somewhere and you get a certificate. Yeah, so, I, I, you know, uh, we, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Y'all are having a party for, uh, Monday, one to three, highway.
Yes, so, so you'll shed, they get the highway, carry it, Tommy, yours.
Yes, it will be Monday, um, from one to three out at the highway. I believe HR sent out a letter notifying all the employees, but anybody in the county is welcome to come.
You, you have, you have touched a lot of lives. You have a lot to be proud of, and, and we're proud of you. And, and, um, I would, I would give you a recommendation to anyone. Thank you very much. All right, that being said, I entertain a motion for recess. Second. Motion for recess in a second. Mr. Brand, yes. Mr. Reagan, yes. Mr. Henry, yes. Recess.